Good morning, everybody.
Morning.
We'll start off as drainage trustees. Trustees, I need approval of the tentative agenda.
Second time.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All ayes. Courtney, would you please read the minutes of the last meeting?
The last meeting was June second, twenty twenty five. The Wright County Board of Supervisors met in regular session and suggested to the Drainage District with the following members present. Rick Rasmussen, Dean Cluse, Lynn Luke, Ashley Bosch, and Betty Ellis. Also present were Courtney Moore, Strange Administrator, and Deb Nussheim, Deputy Auditor. Other interested parties were Wright County Monitor. Motion by Rasmussen and second by Cluse to call the meeting to order motion carried. Motion by Cluse and seconded by Ellis to approve the tentative agenda, motion carried. Minutes of the previous meeting on May twenty seventh, twenty twenty five were read and approved. Drainage plans for payment were approved. There were no work orders needing approval. There were no open drainage invoices needing approval. Motion by Cluse seconded by Bosch to adjourn the meeting, motion carried.
Yeah, if there's no additions or corrections, they stand approved as read. Drainage plans.
There was no plan for today.
Anyone from the public like to speak regarding drainage districts? Uh, let's see, we have no work orders, right?
Two work orders.
We have two.
The first one is for Troy Aspilson. This is in Dean's district. Um, actually, they're both in Dean's district. Uh, this one is for D sixty on the relief. And section twenty-three of Lincoln Township. He has reported a blowout. There's water seeping on the top of the ground. And that the tile feels crushed and it's an eighteen or a twenty-two inch tile. The second one is for Mark Kramer. That is DD one thirty. In section four of Lincoln Township. And this is reported as a tile blowout on a ten or fourteen inch tile.
Motion approved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All ayes. Review and sign any open drainage invoices.
Uh, we have six of them for today. The first one is for Agribia E L C. This is for the engineering services so far for the joint drainage district forty-six dash ninety-two work that's been done. This is for services done last month in May. Uh, this amount was for six hundred dollars for a total of six hours. The second one is for Tile Pros. This was sent to us by Hamilton County. As Wright County is the control county for this. They received a work order. Reported by a Hunter Hayes. And DD sixty-one dash ninety-nine. And this invoice came to one thousand seven hundred and sixteen dollars and thirty-one cents. The next two that you have. Are charges for commissioners for reimbursement. For uh, going out and doing that reclassification for joint drainage district forty-six dash ninety-two. The first one's for Matt Oddland and the amount of a hundred and seventy-eight dollars. The second one is for Perry Black for a hundred and ninety-seven dollars and sixty cents. The next one is for Holland Contracting. They completed a work order that was submitted by a Sandy um, Sheik. For a realignment of one tile. And their invoice came at one thousand two hundred and eighty dollars. And the last one was also for Holland Contracting. Uh, they completed a work order that was submitted by Beverly or Curtis Doran Camp. And that tool came in at one thousand one hundred and seventeen dollars.
Motion approved.
Second time.
All in favor?
Aye.
All ayes. Anything else before the board on drainage?
That is it.
Thank you, Courtney. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Betty?
Aye.
All ayes.
I'm back there. No, I want to stay in open session.
Yeah. Okay. Now we'll convene this board of supervisors. They need approval of the tentative agenda.
Don't move.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
All ayes. Okay, I need, uh, would you read the minutes of the previous meeting, please?
Okay, twenty twenty-five. Chairman Rasmussen called the regular meeting of the Wright County Board of Supervisors to order at ninety. Members present were Cluse, Bosch, Rasmussen, and Luke and Ellis. Motion by Ellis and seconded by Luke. To approve the tentative agenda, motion carries. Minutes of the previous regular meeting of June second, twenty twenty-five were read and approved, thanks for payment. Adam Funnens Wright County Engineer gave an update on the secondary roads. Katie Schultenhopper Wright County Director presented a couple of banking programs that were suggested at the annual treasurer's meeting. The first program being positive pay. Schultenhopper explained that multiple other counties started utilizing this program after having issues with check washing. Which is washing the payday name and entering another name and check altering, which consists of changing the amount of the original debt. To the treasurer with the details of every check that has been presented for payment. Once the treasurer's office confirms the checks are accurate, the bank will process them. The second program is online account control for the county credit cards. Issued through First and Sons Bank. This program will allow two levels of county, uh, two levels of control for the county credit cards accounts. Level one is a basic user control. This consists of being able to access all the county credit card accounts. To pay monthly statement loan. This level include. Will include employees of the auditor's office. Level two is admin level, which gives the user full access to all county credit card accounts, including. Closing accounts and changing limits along with the basic user capabilities. This level will include employees in the treasurer's office. Motion by Cluse seconded by Ellis to approve treasurer Peggy Schultenhopper and deputy treasurer Angie Peterson to have admin level access. And Joan Schillinglaw, A P clerk. And Deb Nussheim Deputy Auditor to have the basic. User access to the online account control program, motion carries. Motion by Cluse seconded by Bosch to receive the monthly revenue report from the Wright County Sheriff for May, motion carries. Eric Rector, Wright County Conservation Director, gave an update on the warning system. At Lake Crinilia stating that the system should have an annual maintenance. The cost for the annual maintenance would be around six hundred dollars. Rector informed the board. That they do test the system monthly to ensure it is in working order. The siren is twenty-five to thirty years. The look and has batteries that last approximately four years. The conservancy board does purpose for new batteries. The current system is not compatible with the updated E nine-one-one radio system. It does not interact with the radio system to activate. Someone must activate it in an emergency. The new system would cost approximately thirty to fifty thousand dollars. Supervisor Ellis asked if Lake Crinilia Association would be happy to pay for the new system. Would help pay.
It won't be.
Supervisor Cluse suggested the board sets up meeting the late. With the Lake Association to discuss it. Under new business, Wright County Economic Development Director Darrell Stephen Carlyle informed the board. That Stacy Lynch has been appointed director of Midas. Motion by Luke, seconded by Ellis to adjourn the meeting, motion carries.
Any additions or corrections? Yes, Eric.
The correction needs to be that it currently works on an old. Band. Should that. Radio band go away. It's unknown if this current siren would. Be able to be.
Activated.
Activated. It currently works.
And I add to that, that system was put in so- in September of two thousand eight. That's not twenty-five, thirty years old. It is seventeen, eighteen, eighteen year old.
Well, the, the current system. Uh, is.
Functions on. An old frequency. Not the new.
Digital.
Digital frequencies.
Thank you.
Okay, I need approval with additions, with the corrections made, and I will sign when she has that done.
I will make a motion. Uh, to approve the minutes after the amendment.
Sure. All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, I, all I still have to have an eye, Betty. Thank you.
I can't listen and write and talk at the same time. Not a multi-tasker.
I will take that into consideration next time. Claims have been around. Anyone from the public like to speak? Okay, it's just about nine fifteen. I'm gonna call it nine fifteen. Even though we're a little bit ahead, not much though. Bruce?
Rawl.
Rawl?
Yes.
Super. City of Woolstock Mayor and Dar- Darrell Stephen Carlyle with Wright County Economic Development to discuss urban renewal area for the city of Woolstock. Thank you for coming.
Thanks.
Yes.
No, I didn't tell you because I wanted to hear first.
Good morning.
Morning.
For the past six or nine months, W C E D has been working with the prospect on an expansion project. Uh, that particular prospect looked at multiple counties in our region for the location of this expansion. Through lots and lots of dialogue with the prospect and the CEO of that prospect. Were pleased to announce that they have decided to uh, reload, uh, provide the expansion here in Wright County. At the southeast corner of C seven, the end White Box Road. That particular location is within a two mile radius of the city of Woolstock. If you remember, the board approved and a, through, with the assistance of the auditor, the board approved. An, an agreement with. The Allers firm to proceed with an urban renewal district for the county. Part of that process is to have a consultation with the other taxing authorities. I set up a meeting, an informal meeting with the mayor and his city clerk. To go over the project and to explain. The benefit that this could have and, and should have on the city of Woolstock. Um, I know based on my relationship with the mayor and attending their city council meetings, I know that they have some major concerns with their water treatment plant. And this would serve as an excellent funding mechanism for their plant and the, and the rebuild of that plant. So what you have before you today is a resolution of consent. And what that means is that we are consenting, Wright County is consenting to allow Woolstock to take the lead. And to establish the, a Woolstock urban renewal area for this particular project. Uh, it's a win-win-win for everybody. It's a win for the prospect, saying here in Wright, uh, being here in Wright County. It's a win for the county because it is, the taxes are being paid here in Wright County, and it's definitely a win for the city of Woolstock. So we are asking the board to approve the resolution as presented. Each question is fifty cents, so please ask as many as you can.
Do you have the estimated valuation of the project?
Uh, right around two point five. And again, that figure will be, but, uh, finding once project gets voided.
Do they have an estimated completion date?
Uh, we do not yet.
My understanding from conversations of uh, the board president is they expect to store grain there this fall.
And again, you know, so I did not, I, I'm not mentioning the name of the prospect only because of nothing, uh, we don't have all the dots, uh, dots cross, that, the T's brought the dot side.
So I'm assuming that the plan is for the city of Woolstock to tip this area.
That's correct.
New urban renewal, tip this area and utilize those funds for.
The, the incentive package for the prospect and also for the benefit of.
Excellent.
Okay, so there will be development agreement.
Yes, yes.
rebate.
Yep, they're, they're, the city of Woolstock is using Dorsey and Whitney, uh, and Jan Dan, John Daniels.
Sounds like a win-win for everybody.
It is.
I would make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-three. Uh, inclusion of certain property into the twenty twenty-five Woolstock urban renewal area of the city of Woolstock.
I'll second.
Betty, how do you vote?
Aye.
Glenn?
Aye.
Ashley?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
I also vote aye. All ayes.
Thank you. The chair signed the resolution along with the auditor. You have three, three seconds.
You don't want me to sign this one?
No, sir.
Sir, minute.
No, actually.
Can't multitask.
We feel the love.
Total love.
You'll be riffing.
I'm driving the next train.
You ain't feeling, be what I say. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Betty.
You got it. The fifteen, nine thirty.
One of those nights.
Let's, uh, we got time to do fourteen, I believe. Uh, take action on table item from June second to increase the annual salary of attorney's office manager.
Yeah.
Morning, Eric.
Good morning.
Watch your knees.
It means I'm a stranger to this. Area. Uh, as Mayor Paul, a couple of weeks ago, I came to the board, uh, discussed the possibility of increasing the salary for the office manager in my office. Um, I've heard a review of the. Late review of the salary compared to some other counties. It appeared that ours was being, uh, pretty swiftly underfunded. Uh, the board tasked me and asked me to look at whether, what impact I would have on, uh, the current budget and whether that could be something that I could address in there specifically. So I did that here in the last couple of weeks. Um, I, I think based on my review of our budget, I can do an increase without.
Have speakers? Speakers, I have to hear it. I use my.
Joan, can you note yourself, please?
You do have some discretionary funds. There's a one specific line item in particular, uh, that I think would. Uh, be the one that would probably be most likely used, which is under professional and technical services. It's, uh, primarily designed for. Uh, not only our software programming, but also for if we need, uh, expert witnesses or something like that in criminal cases, which doesn't happen all the time. It's built into the budget as a part of that, uh, because I've had that happen over the course of years where, not every year, but, uh, where we have a major case of some sort may require. A separate expert witness. Or witnesses, uh, those can be, as you might imagine, quite expensive, so, uh, rather than, uh, one that happens. Including that as an amendment to a budget, I now try to build it into the budget to be available if that fund was under necessary. But it doesn't happen, uh, thankfully too frequently. We have those types of major cases that require that. Probably more common situation where that happens is where. Uh, we have to make that a question of the competency of the defendant, the male contractor, but then we have to hire someone to look into that. Like a psychologist, psychiatrist is probably the most common example that could start a situation arising, but that would happen, so it's, uh, too often. Uh, bottom line is, I think, when I look at that fund in particular, uh, in terms of trying to make things as budget neutral as possible. I think I could increase the office manager's salary to approximately fifty-nine thousand dollars and still account for, uh. Not having to do any kind of budget amendment. And be fairly confident that that's not going to create a longer term issue for me on that. I will be quite upfront about it, though, if there were some kind of major case like that that occurred, it might be a surprise that we have to go ask for amendment to the budget. In that year, uh, just because of that, there may be additional expenses, but as I said, that doesn't happen all the time. It's, it's going to understand.
I understand.
Uh, that fifty-nine thousand dollars, if we're to consider that, would be about in mid-range, I think, of what the. What I'm seeing from the office managers in our area, Hubble County, for example, uh, their office manager. Uh, is at about fifty-six, five, I understand, and County. Manager has had sixty-five thousand dollars a year. She's got about fourteen years of experience. Uh, my office manager has over twenty-five. Kind of, I think, rather than medium range of that, it's a network, so we're considering.
I would make a motion to approve the increase in salary for the, uh, attorney office manager to fifty-nine thousand dollars per year effective.
Sure. I will second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
All ayes? Thank you, Eric.
Thanks, sir.
We'll read it after five minutes. Nine thirty, Eric Rector is Wright County Conservation Director and representative, representatives from Lake Crinia Lake Association to discuss warning system at Lake Crinia. Watch your knees.
Thank you. You've been nice.
Morning.
Thank you.
We are ready.
So am I. Uh, well, I appreciate you taking time to, uh, let's meet, um. I represent the, my name is Steve Bean, President of Lake and Improvement Association. I have a couple of representatives here along with us today. But, um. And we appreciate everything that the county does for us, for our region. And, um, we're here specifically to talk about the warning sirens put in two thousand eight. At a price of about eighteen grand. At a five-year warranty with it. It does service, um, the lake and surrounding country club. Businesses and a few residents that sort, that we touch there as well. At this point, I guess we're, we're here to, number one. Try and, uh. When we put this in, we basically, um, came to the, the county with a, with a grant. Opportunity that we have with Wright County charitable foundation. At that point. That, that board decided, uh, that they would fully fund the, the shortfall of that. Tuned to about nine thousand dollars. It was an eighteen thousand dollar purchase. And, uh, we were, everybody was so excited to get it in that we did not discuss this future. And, uh, so here we are discussing the future, you know, years later. So we are, um, number one, the, uh, it's been put to the Lake Improvement Association to, uh. Look into participating in this and going, going forward. Number one, um, our insurance. There is, I think, um, as the board. It was presented back to me to represent back to you that, uh. Board does not have insurance capability to cover. And it's not necessarily the cost of the equipment that we're concerned about, maybe the liability. That being if the siren was activated and, um. It didn't, didn't work. And we just don't have that type of insurance policy.
And I reached out to Eric on, to look into the insurance on it. Wish we can take care of the insurance on it because it's on our ground. Right, so the insurance problem is not a issue at this point. And also. The biggest issue is. Our batteries were bad. We replaced the batteries and what that cost us.
Four hundred and eighty bucks somewhere in there.
Okay, and we've taken care of that. I guess the next big step is we need to. At least try to get someone to service it every so many years.
It's recommended to be serviced every year.
Okay. Uh, we'd like to get that done to keep it safe for everybody and keep our insurance liability proper on it. And then the other big item is going to be who's gonna. How much cost is the Lake Association willing to help with? And the conservation, they use it out there as well with the campgrounds. Uh. Not that it's gonna need immediate. Immediately put another new one in to go with the new system that's been online for a while. It's down the road. When will we need to replace that one to get it to the digital system? Am I not correct on that, Eric?
That's, yeah, I mean, that's up to you guys.
Yeah.
Well, I'm gonna throw out a question to you guys, supervisors, and I understand, and I'm. Just learning. The breakdown of the county's budget and, and its, its divisions, that would be. Uh, your board of trustees for Grant Township, which, uh, I think there's five individuals on there, and I believe they're, they're funded. Uh, for emergency management.
Ambulance, no, no, I'm, I'm sorry, fire department, for fire.
I'm looking to see that this siren come underneath their jurisdiction for safety. And you, so it's already in the line item of budget, but that needs to be amended. Uh, us as the Lake, currently Improvement Association is wrestling, we don't, we don't run the siren, we don't. Activate it. It didn't get activated last Thursday when the winds blew, neither did Belmont's.
There wasn't a tornado warning.
They don't activate them for winds.
Okay. When the sheriff's department tells them, well, then it is to go to the school, the, for cover.
We, we tell the campground, we get notified of storms and stuff, uh, watches, warnings for severe thunderstorm warnings. Uh, watches and warnings for tornado. And we go around and we alert the campground and the people in the beach. The only reason the sirens ever set off is if there's an actual tornado spotted by an officer. Or the National Weather Service puts one out.
So anyways, that's, uh. That would be something that I'll throw out to look into is, uh. I guess, um. The Lake Crinia Improvement Association Board is. Maybe, uh. Wanted me to present it, they're not ready to fund that, uh, the ongoing maintenance of this. And look, and looking for other alternatives, if possible. At this time.
So township trustees do have the, the ability, they are a taxing authority. Um, typically that is used for rural fire cemeteries. Um. Is there anything else, Betty, that I'm missing there?
Um, those are the two big ones, is the, the, the road fire and the cemetery. Um. I have to look at their budget to see if, like, EMS is on there considered? And I don't know, Jerika, do you recall, uh? Anything on that, um? It, so that would be something we'd have to look at. And I don't know if Joan, Joan, I, online? Do, can you look at the budget and see if there's, like, EMS levy available? I mean, she's, see if she's listening or not, but, um.
I thought she had her hand up, but that's my cursor.
But I will. See if I can find. It's, it's not something that's ever been done, so it'd be something that would be a unique.
Well, I believe it's the only siren that the county has.
Correct, correct, so. Um, and, and so, like, on the budget side of it, you know, the, the county has your general basic for general, and that's, everybody in the county gets. for general, and that's, everybody in the county gets, um, taxed on their general basic. Okay. And I need this back, because this is all.
Yes, ma'am. Absolutely.
Thank you, Joan. That was quick.
So, uh, their line items that they're authorized to, uh, fund for through Iowa code is, uh, own cemetery and park, non-owned cemetery. Um, actually, they don't have anything for the own cemetery park. Non-owned cemetery, they can, uh, do six and three-quarters cents per thousand, uh, for their township hall, um, which requires a vote if they're going to levy that. They're authorized up to twenty and one-quarter cent, uh, for repairs on their township hall. It would be thirteen and a half cents for their library, six and three-quarters cent. Um, and then fire and emergency services. They don't have, let me see if I can, oh, yeah, they're currently, uh, taxing at forty-six cents per thousand.
And they can go up to sixteen and three-quarters.
Correct.
So, um, and it did say fire and emergency.
Fire and emergency services. That's correct.
So, that would be something that they could look into. And wish, you know, they, the, the township trustees would have to kind of consider if that's something that they want to ask the entire township to pay, not just, but that is probably the best place for it. And then as far as, like, charitable foundation and grants, is that something they could apply for if we have some sort of a matching fund through the charitable foundation?
Correct. Again, that's, like, all open on January point six.
Okay. Because there's nothing right now that needs to be, and it needs to be something that's planned, like eighteen months in advance, if you want it to go through a township because of the budget process.
And so, uh, those, those budgets have already been submitted and approved. But for next year, they could look at increasingly.
What I'll propose to you is this is a copy of the Lake Cornea Master Plan that we did in two thousand eleven. I guess what the Lake Association will, would, uh, promote is that, uh, the Lake Association, potentially with the conservation, the representatives, supervisors, the trustees, et cetera, et cetera, maybe get together and help formulate a, a future master plan to update this one that we have in place. And so we're not just doing knee-jerk reactions and going back and funding something in the past, and what is the plan? Replacement of the siren, uh, or maybe, I think, same replacement of sirens, and I hope that the head's good, you know, maybe it's just the board, I don't know. Right. I, I'm not an expert in that.
Right.
It may be a minimal dollar amount there, so maybe major. So, again, without putting the research.
Or to be adept, to be able to adapt the, or circuitry to a digital signal and some.
And when that need may arise, I don't know when that is either, and when the Sheriff's Department changes to a different frequency, what do we end up with then? So, so anyway, so this was put together and a lot of the things in there we have already accomplished. But again, I think it's wise that we, as a group, work together for the future improvement of, uh, of the investment that you guys have made in, in, uh, Lake Cornea area, as well as our residents and businesses there. And, uh, how, how do we go forward and also how do we fund it? And that's for us helping with grant writing, raising funds or whatever, so, so we're, uh, uh, right now, we are in the middle of a major project, and that is our water quality for our lake and the Clear Lake Pond Leaf. We've got a five-year commitment. We're in year one of that, and, uh, it's been a match made by the residents, and so we've been funding considerable amount of money this last year, and we've made a five-year commitment with not knowing what the budget is for you, for everyone to be able to enjoy that asset of Lake Cornea, so.
Is that for treatment for the Curly?
It is.
Is that my alcohol?
What's that?
Is it called Curly?
Curly, they, um, yeah. So they, uh, with the, uh, conservation, um, Wright County, along with the DNR, we've tackled and been very successful this last year. I believe Clear Lake is, has got a line item budget of two hundred and eighty thousand dollars to tackle theirs for this next year. It's a big concern and ongoing concern of, uh, protecting our water, and that's one of the focuses of Lake Cornea Improvement Association.
And you guys have been funding that?
We funded it this first year. We made a five-year commitment with them. The majority of it is funded through fishermen's dollars, through the DNR.
Okay, so you're not funding it a hundred percent?
No, 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 it's matched, but.
Yeah.
We've stepped up, I think, substantially, and it's been successful this year.
I, I'm encouraged in the fact that, uh, that it says emergency services on that line item, uh, which in Iowa code, that's section three fifty-nine, point four-three, um. It seems like it would be a simple budgetary matter to, um, to, to be able to fund not only the, uh, annual uh, maintenance of it, but also to be able to start swirling away money similar to what trustees do when they're informed by the Clarion Fire Department that they're gonna upgrade to a, a pumper truck or something that's used in the rural environment, um, and all of the townships that are involved in that rural association and contribute to the, to those dollars, so. Um, and typically, we're giving, you know, at least with the rural fire departments that I've been associated with as a trustee, um, typically, they have a five-year plan on replacing the questions, so.
Which is, is something we need to look into is what is it gonna take to update it?
Electronic engineering is coming out to look at the whole system. Take one to give me a maintenance cost. He didn't, he couldn't give me a ballpark.
Do we remember who we bought it, through, see?
Yeah.
Was it Electronic Engineering by channel?
No, it was, um, Federal Signal Corporation.
Where, where were they out of?
They're out of, uh, the groups of his name.
I believe they're out of Ohio or Indiana or someplace else.
Snyder, Nebraska.
Snyder, Nebraska.
Then I can, if anybody wants this, I could, goods, you're welcome to.
Yeah, if we could get a copy of that for Eric, just so that he's got that to be able to share with, um, Electronic Engineering, whether they would be able to groom any information out of that or not.
I think they just, they, they work on the town sirens and stuff like that. That's who Jason said that.
Good.
Said he's used.
But it would be nice to know if this Federal Signal Corporation has devised a way to upgrade an analog siren to a digital format. We're not the first ones that have switched our EMS system or our nine-one-one system over to a digital system, so.
And the Sheriff's Office may have PHFs.
Yeah.
For whatever the frequency for the next thirty years.
Oh.
But if they don't.
Was Wright County involved in the implementation of that in the very beginning, or was it ad-funded by the Lake Association?
Basically, uh, the Lake Cornea Improvement Association reached out to the Wright County Charitable Foundation about the possibility of a grant and, um, uh, through them, and, uh, we were awarded that with, uh, with the stipulation that we had to do some match. And so then we were, we presented to that, at that time, the supervisors about what they felt was a, was a viable amount. And, uh, at that point, they decided they would fund the other half.
And the Lake Association paid?
Zero.
Yeah.
Oh, the county paid the half and the charitable foundation matched.
Okay.
We were able to facilitate the grant.
Yeah.
Sorry. Anything else?
I don't think so. I think, uh, is that? I'm trying to, uh, figure out how we facilitate that with the township trustees, if that should come from the supervisors or if that should come from the Lake Cornea, uh, Association. Thoughts?
I would like to get, um, some information maybe from our, whether it be, um, from the Department of Management or from our county attorney on, uh, if that is an allowable expense. I'm reading the code section right now, and, and it just has, uh, Fire Protection Service or Emergency Medical Service Agreement, or both service agreements with a charter city. So I don't know if you would call the Lake Cornea Improvement Association, kind of like, it's not a charter city.
Right.
But if we can get some sort of an agreement, whether you can make, if it fits, right? So, um, I'm not saying that it, you know, I'm not an attorney and I'm not with the Department of Management, and those are the two that would get us in trouble if anything goes awry. So obviously, we would want to just make sure, um.
Eric, is that something that you could look into on the code to see if, if we could fit this under that?
I mean, to me, it makes a perfect sense, and it's, it'd be a great, because there's not, you know, this City of Clarion has a taxing authority. The county is bigger. And then you go down, and then you've got the Lake Cornea, uh, the sanitary sewer, you know, that, that you have a taxing, maybe. So you're just trying to pare it down to so that general taxpayers not pay in.
Although it is, the lake is utilized by the whole county available, as well as beyond.
Right.
And so it's not just the, the residents of that.
Correct. So, anyway.
But so, so Eric, if you could get back to us on whether or not that code section fits to where township trustees would have truly the taxing authority to say, we're gonna, we're gonna make this one of our line items. Um, and then, uh, we will get back with the Lake Association. Because, uh, how about the interaction between, should that come from the supervisors to the trustees? Or should it come from the association?
Three of us. I'd be, I'd be willing to sit on that with the Lake Association and the trustees and to, to have a meeting.
Okay.
Um, and I don't know if, Amanda, can you get ahold of Carrie Johnson and ask some question? Uh, would be Carrie, sure, that's a DM, or is it would be? Not Ted Nelson, so if you wouldn't mind getting ahold of him and just posing some of these questions, that would be great. I don't think there is.
Be cool.
It's on either county or state property, but Lake Cornea Improvement Association has taken over the, um, management of, uh, of the well. I'll be on that, as far as details.
I have to tell me state property.
So, we, we start running the state, county and private property out there, I guess, very.
And are you guys responsible for the upkeep of it, or?
We did take that on.
The well, if we have to ever replace it?
Yeah, that was another one, though. I don't believe we have able to get insurance on the building itself.
Maybe insurance on the building itself, yeah.
But we have, uh, we have set aside, we built them, just like, you know, we've set aside reserves to, uh, potentially replace that, um, but, uh, well, we, we, we're pushing that.
Is it a big building or is that just a small bill?
It's just a small building, small building.
It's like a pop house.
Yeah, so the fire department, they're out there in those areas for the surrounding area, they'll come and pull water out of there.
And maybe you want to look at that too for insurance purposes?
Sure.
That's on, still.
Yeah, well, we need to find out.
See, the, the problem with, well, I don't know who originally put the well in, if it was. The county can ensure the tornado siren because it's on land that we manage, but also originally the county had money in this deal. That's the only reason that it can be put on our insurance.
So the building may not be able to.
The building may not be able to because the county didn't have any take on the well when it was installed. Those records are, I don't know how old those are. Go back in the forties, fifties. It, it's old, that's all I know. I have the original well drillers law, but I just doesn't say, doesn't have a date on when that came.
It probably does, but as far as who put it in, or it may say who put it in or whatever, I'm not really sure.
Okay, so we will do some investigating on our ends, uh, if you can, or if the three of you are the three that would be the point of contact for getting together with the supervisors and.
Let me, let me know when I can.
Okay.
Get the team together.
Good.
If need be, and simple is good, keep it simple.
Absolutely.
All right.
Yep. All right. Estimated time, I mean, just.
Oh, I would think that Eric would have an answer for us within a week and, uh.
I'd probably get asked me probably today.
Okay.
If not tomorrow.
So, yeah.
I just want general.
I'd say about a week or so.
We could do.
Give us a chance to get our, make sure code and everything aligns before we step down that road.
That's very quickly for all the moving parts.
And just so. And just so everybody knows, there's nothing wrong with the warning device at this point.
No.
We're just looking ahead.
And more so reason, all the reason for that, um, long-range goals.
Yeah.
The plan, we, we need to work on.
We need, uh.
We have a, you guys are doing the road out there, I believe, in next year budget? So question is, what are you doing for the lake? Are we doing anything? Are we gonna widen it for a trail? Are we gonna go down any of the side roads?
Yeah, it says we're gonna be widening it for a trail.
Nelson Avenue from one hundred and eighty-fifth street going to where your trail starts, we're gonna widen the shoulders for shared.
Oh, is that around the curve by the country club?
No, I wouldn't encourage that. That's not part of the walking, because you already have a trail.
I understand there's people riding bikes on that.
You ought to shit and tell them not to.
You police that. But anyways, that's, that's all we're, we're asking is that, uh, we, we, uh, become part of the, uh, the plan for the future.
And you guys have a representative that sits in on the trails plan? There's a Trails Committee for Wright County?
Eric Mulder.
Excellent.
Yep.
Good, good.
Yeah, yeah. We'll try to attend one to begin.
Yeah, understood.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you all. Appreciate your time.
Very much. Thank you for the laminated.
There you go, there you go. There you go, take care. Thanks, thanks, buddy. Appreciate it very much.
All right, Bob. Thank you.
Thanks.
I'm gonna give this to you so that I don't. Joan sounded serious when she said, get this back to me.
Hey, there's your lady. You want me to talk to you? Forty-two. Yeah.
I bet you make it.
I have your standards, you have mine.
Man, would you like this?
Hey, Adam, ready?
What's yours?
Okay, uh, on June second, we, uh, did our fuel bid for FY twenty-six. Um, I have the, it'd be the first page in your packet. Um, we received three bids. Um, the apparent low is Advantage FS at point zero nine or zero seven nine cents over rack price. So whatever the DOT rack price is, and then we add the seven, seven point nine cents on top of that, so. So for our bill, so that is the current price this year. So my recommendation is to stay with the advantage F S.
Okay, and maybe move along this.
I'm gonna make motion to award the Wright County Fuel letting bid to advantage F S for point oh seven nine or seven point nine cents per gallon on the Gasahole Premium Grade Diesel and Arctic Diesel.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All ayes.
What I'll do is I'll send them the contract and get their signature and then I'll bring it back to you.
Thanks.
Next item is the resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-one, adjustment to specific bridge embargoes. We have our contractor or our structural engineer went out and reviewed all our bridges. We only have four this year. I think it was like eight or nine last year that we had to make a change on. So we're doing pretty good trying to get these bridges replaced that are out there. I gave you a map of where these bridges are located. Two of them, we have plans of, or actually three out of four, we currently have plans for twenty, Bridge forty-nine. We're gonna look at doing some steel bent piles, so we'll drill through the deck, put some I beams back underneath it and then support the deck, so it should bring it back up to legal. So the one thirty-four A is scheduled of twenty twenty-seven replacement. That is on a level B route, so we're trying to figure out maybe a way to do it in, in-house without having to do local letting or contractor, so it's a little bit bigger structure than we would like.
None of these are qualified for your big tubes that you guys have done.
We, some of them will, some of them won't. I haven't reviewed them for that. One forty-one, I think that would be one that would be able to be a big tube because we did the north and south one from that. So that's just going down to fourteen twenty-one twenty-one. And then one forty-nine, we have it to ten fifteen fifteen. And of course, for anybody who asks a question about what the numbers mean, the first number is a type of vehicle, so it's like a straight truck. Second number is a, I think, a truck and pup or then a semi. So, so it's, it's just the identification of what's on the type of vehicle for that, so.
Most approved resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-one, adjustment to specific bridge embargo.
Okay.
My second thought. Dean, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ashley?
Aye.
Lynn?
Aye.
Betty?
Aye.
Me?
Aye.
All ayes.
You can sign that and then give it to Amanda and then she'll just scan it, please. Thank you, sir.
Most certainly, sir.
Ready, Mr. Chairman?
Any day.
Resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-two, policy for drainage style crossings and parallel tile within county secondary roads. I stole this policy from Humboldt, Webster and Hamilton. They do the same thing. What this does, this policy does state, we will follow anybody who wants to do a tile crossing in the, in the county, but they would have to follow the drainage district or the drainage code to do that and they would have to, that section is the bottom section where they go through. They would have to file a application in writing to the county auditor. Then they'd have to go through a hearing, they'd have to get their own engineer, all that. And then we would be able to pay the full entire amount of the crossing. So it lays, lays out their steps, one through eight, what they have to do. This, sorry.
Including the costs that they've, all of the costs that they've incurred. Is that?
Nope, just tile crossing.
Just the.
Just the crossing we would pay for.
Okay.
So they're gonna pay for the engineer, they're gonna pay for any costs that the auditor's office has to do. Or above that, we would pay for right away to right away.
Okay.
This does allow them to go kind of a short form, the above process, but so they would essentially just make an application to the engineer's office. And then we would let them know that, hey, we're only gonna do up to fifty percent, up to two thousand dollars for an open crop, open cut. And then fifty percent of any cost materials and installation up to ten thousand dollars for boring.
So in that instance, do you do the engineering work or who does the engineering work?
Okay, yeah, yeah. Yep, so and then it also allows, so this does state that from funds available, that's what the, the code states. So if we made a line item in our budget that we're gonna hold, maybe let's say thirty grand. Let's say we have ten bores that year where they do the short form. Another person comes in, they have to wait till the next year to get their reimbursement of the ten grand.
Or pay for it themselves.
Or pay for it themselves.
Okay. Or, or the. She would be willing to.
Yeah.
I guess that's my question. I come in, you're out of funds, but I say I don't want to do all the engineering and all of that stuff, so I tell you, hey, I'll pay for it. Because I'm assuming that that's cheaper than hiring an engineer and going through the code.
Yep.
You in that instance would do that and issue the permit for them to have the work done that year.
Yep, yeah, yeah, it's not gonna hold off the permit, it's just gonna hold off the reimbursement. Because the funds are not available.
Okay.
So that's, that's up to them. So they, we, we first come, first served essentially on the next year.
Yep.
So.
How often does that happen? Not very.
Well, this is, we've never done this, we'll pay, we've always just paid the whole thing. But we've never really made them go through the public hearing and do all that. So this is a limiting line building one, or they can go down a long road of getting full reimbursement.
But the, like, if you're out of funds this year, it doesn't carry over into next year, correct? So like if. You've got.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
If you got like the, the tenth person coming in, you're out of funds. It doesn't mean that they still get this job done this year and they get ten, ten thousand dollars.
They'd be on a first come, first served basis when funds are available. So let's say we're, we did three this year and we're thirty thousand tapped, done. We have four, five, six, okay, that have already done, let's say we did ten or six crossings. Four, fives and six didn't get reimbursement right away. They have to wait till we get funds back into our account, essentially after one, and then they get reimbursed.
They will get reimbursed, this may take a year or two.
Yeah, depending on how, how many we have ahead, so.
Gotcha. I was just trying to.
Yep.
Does that become a?
No, because we, it's not, it's not a, a bookkeeping nightmare because we would make a work order on it.
I'm just thinking of land transfers and that whole.
So, so I guess your question being in there, because we have the applicant that is responsible for it. We don't reimburse the contractor, we reimburse the applicant. The applicant has to pay their bill first, then we would pay the applicant back.
Okay.
Are these dollar amounts the same as Webster Humboldt?
I think Humboldt's and Webster's in, is two thousand, I think they're fifteen thousand on their crossings. I moved it down to ten.
And typically the crossings that you've seen of a eight inch, ten inch size?
Haven't done too many of them. They've been mostly open cuts. You're probably gonna be in that five to six thousand dollar range. We're just, we have a permit that was issued in twenty twenty-four and they're just now trying to get it done this year. And it was five thousand bucks for a crossing, kind of like gravel road. Thing sticks about in that twenty percent, twenty, forty percent. So. And you look at the one that we had to do on the blacktop for Mr. A, that was, was fifty grand.
Good.
Why are you budgeting hurry?
For that line item, yeah, I will. Yep. So I also, the one thing that doesn't, that did change from theirs was number six on the upper portion tile. This, this is kind of just a, it's never been really stated, the drainage district or the drainage code doesn't, it's does address it, but it doesn't say really how to address it, so parallel tile. So any parallel tile to go in the road ditch that drain land, it's not responsibility of secondary roads because they didn't cross the land. So essentially it's not a tile crossing, it makes it a work in the right of the permit. So any, any work done on that is the responsibility of the owner of that tile. Does that make sense?
And if it's parallel to the roadway, is, does that have to be a solid tile or can it be a perforated tile? Does it make a difference?
I don't think it makes a difference because we'll put in, sometimes we'll put in, depending on how much water's coming into that area surface wise, we'll put it in her too, so.
Okay.
Yep.
Is there any action on this yet?
Not yet, I'm waiting.
Well, Billy had a question about the dollar amount, I didn't know if she had some, if she didn't like that dollar amount or?
No, I'm fine with that. I was just looking to see if they bore across, if there has to be any engineering done by the landowners, by the landowner requesting the boring.
If they go on the second process, yeah.
Only if the second, so the first one they can.
We'll review it and make sure that it's draining the proper amount of acres.
Okay. Gotcha. I'm good.
I would make most approved resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-two, a policy for drainage tile crossing and parallel tile within the county secondary roads right away.
I will second that.
Ashley, how do you vote?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Lynn?
Aye.
Betty?
Aye.
I'm also aye, all ayes.
Okay, next item is the, just the update, routine maintenance. We are working, still working on two seventieth street in, in the, in between raindrops, obviously. I don't think they could do it today because that area got some, got some rain yesterday and over the weekend. Trucks are still hauling the year two rock, spot loads one hundred and fortieth street, we did receive some phone calls. I don't know what changed up there, we're trying to figure out if there was different hauling or something that had changed east of Madison Avenue. We had to put about twenty-five spot loads in there and I think we're gonna just dust it with about a hundred seventy-five tons per mile. Because something changed up there, some traffic changed, it's, I got a lot of dark spots, so. We're trying to figure that out. Then we also, we have our contractor coming in to do some slurry, slurry sealing, slurry, slurry sealing or scrub seal on, they're gonna be doing south of Rowan on R sixty-five and then also into, on three thirty-fifth into Woolstock. So we haul them concrete sand. This is the same process we did up on the road going C thirty-two out of Goldfield. Remember that?
Yeah, where you did the sand to try to save it for another five years, which it worked out perfectly.
Yeah.
It majorly saved that road from being completely destroyed.
Yeah, so what it does is they, they put down an emulsion and they brush it in and it gets all into the, even the fine cracks on the road and seals those up. And then we put concrete sand on top of it to kind of just get a wearing course and then.
Looks like hell to start off with, but it really paid off.
Yep.
What roads was that on?
So south of Rowan on that, like asphalt proportion, or sorry, Rowan, Galt, excuse me, Galt. Right there, Galt, R sixty-five into the, into the city where the stop sign starts. We're going on that one because that's asphalt, this is concrete, so they don't go over that. And then three thirty to the stop sign in Woolstock. So you'll see that probably depending on weather later on this week.
Because they did the crack filling on that?
Yep, we did the crack filling and the, we did slurry leveling on all the cracks on the, the Galt Road too. So we prepped it for that.
Okay.
Yep. Work orders, we completed thirty-two hauling objectives. We're about ninety-eight percent done on the engineer miles, we're left to two seventieth because it's being worked on right now. Seventy percent done on the year two rock and then construction. I sent you all a text last week about the hundred one fifty-seven A getting started south of Lux or south of Albona. So they should be tearing that out and then we replace it.
And that was Mary?
Mary, out of Albona, yep.
Anything else, Brad?
Did I, did you say, did I miss C seventy and I'm faded on?
Oh, C seventy, there, there, we have our contractor called this morning, P C I. They're switching crews on us and bringing in their dirt crew. So that's essentially where we're at, is just moving dirt around. They've poured the wing walls, so they've got to get all their dirt work done before they can pour the approaches and do the guard route. Just FYI, we did have some flooding issues down on Page Avenue today that we had some water over the road. The guys are out checking their areas south, south town here because it did get quite a bit of rain in that area last night, so.
At the farm, I've had over five inches since, let me say.
Yep, yep, so, yeah.
Have you been working on that gravel road going into Eagle Grove?
Yeah, the two seventieth project.
Okay.
Yep, so they've been, last week they did all their marking cuts. We're gonna leave anything in the ditch right now in the bottom, in the back slope. We're working with all the landowners adjacent to that and gonna roll that up into their fields because it was too much material to bring onto the road. I did go off there the other day and the motor grader guy said that there was tons of, tons of rock on the shoulder line that they brought up onto the road. So they've got a good cross slope starting, we did move out the water truck out there because it was powdering up on them pretty good, so they can add some moisture to it to be able to compact it in. Yeah, that's what we're at with that.
And what's the main reason for that? Because I had a sheriff come up and talk to me about it.
So really, I mean, just creating the cross slope because it was all an inverted cross slope. So it was actually like this and we get potholes and it was so wide that we didn't have any drainage, one, to keep the water off the road and the water stayed in the middle. So we brought all that shoulder rock that's been pushed out back up on the road, created that, that top.
So you're really not.
We're not narrowing it up, we're putting it back to twenty-six feet.
So you're not narrowing it, any, because that was his biggest concern, they ripped me apart on it and I'm like, I was finding out.
It's actually gonna be probably a little bit wider than it was actually designed for.
Oh, glad to hear that.
But, but the general observation is, is that it is getting narrower. Yes, because it is pushed out, so.
But you mainly be shaking the gravel road.
Yeah, to create the drainage, it'll be, it'll be a better road.
I knew it was a water problem.
It's just like on three hundred and tenth where we did that dish clean out with the motor grader.
Because I know it's a big, big cut through for Eagle Grove, but they're gonna have to realize.
It, it's honestly, it's gonna be just as wide as any paved road, paved roads normally twenty-two feet wide. On a paved surface.
Okay.
Good.
Anything else? Thank you. Peggy Sluton offer Wright County Treasurer to present notice of termination of twenty-eight E agreements with the city of Eagle Grove and the city of Goldfields.
So I think it was like eleven years ago, we signed twenty-eight E agreements with the cities, those two cities to collect delinquent parking tickets for them, which would basically put a stop on them to need to renew their car via, their car registrations. For most of those years, we've had very little activity in that until this year. And this year, I mean, we're talking like, let me see, I think last year like they only certified to us like maybe one or five or something like that. And that's kind of how it's been since we signed these twenty-eightys. This year though, this is our list.
Oh, wow.
Really?
Yeah, this is our collection, so. So we're doing a lot more than we had before and I, quite honestly, it's become too much for my office to handle.
I bet the people are happy to.
Yeah, they're thrilled and like we're.
Smiles and.
Well, they're already happy to see us, you know, and then we surprise them with these delinquent parking tickets. And.
So how do you do that in your office? You just have to, is there a way you can find out who's delinquent or?
So what happens is the, there's a particular officer in Eagle Grove that will email me a list every so often. And then I go into each customer file in the D O T system and put a stop on there for, and they can't renew online, they can't renew in my office, they can't renew anywhere. And most of the time they find out at eleven fifty-nine the night before they're delinquent. So that creates a lot of fun. And then the problem that we've really been having is that there might be some discrepancy and they might be fighting it in court. And that system is, the state system's even a slower method of government than the county system is. And so it might put them out into delinquency several weeks and then maybe it's thrown out and maybe they should have been able to renew and it's getting into legal battles I did not intend on getting into. But they've become delinquent because they were fighting them.
So did the twenty-eight E agreement have in it a, you have to notify us thirty days in advance or ninety? Thirty days in advance or ninety days or six months?
Either one of us can terminate ninety days.
Ninety days, okay, so this would ultimately be their ninety day warning.
Right, we'll, we'll be done, I think we decided September fifteenth, I think will be our.
And, and at the termination of that, those ninety days. We still deal with anything that is current or it is, it's your baby now?
Yeah, yeah, what will happen on that ninetieth day or the ninety-first day is I'll go in and back out all of these. We, we do get five dollars. No, because, okay, so here's all the ones we've collected. Uh, we've only got one for Goldfield, but for the ones for Eagle Grove for this fiscal year, we've made a hundred and fifty dollars. And we've sent them a lot more than that, I think they're almost twelve hundred. So it is not really benefiting the county, it's benefiting the city and I feel like it's kind of become their henchmen. Not I, I end up with that with taxes. Yeah, so I would like to end both of them and give it back to them, it's for their benefit, not ours.
What would happen if the person went, paid their fine at the city hall? And then a week later comes to your office, how often does city hall let you know when one has been paid?
Not very.
So then.
Usually it's, um, we run into a few issues with this, um, because. We, uh, we'll get someone, like, say you got a parking ticket and you come in. And city hall has not let us know that they've taken the payment there, one, we're out our five bucks. Two, we've got a disgruntled employee or a disgruntled customer who knows that they paid it. And we've got to do the work to undo all that. And then renew them as well. We've had one where they paid both places.
Was there a reason that we? Thought this was a good idea?
The cities come to us and ask us to do it. Yeah.
But the cities would have the same authority to, they wouldn't have the DOT authority, but they could garnish. This, their city taxes?
I really don't know.
Or not, because all that stuff's paid through the courthouse.
I think it would go through a clerk of court, I mean, it would be like a, a court action instead of a. Hold up a registration and I feel like the, the code allows us to stop their registration only because it's involving a vehicle. So it involves a DOT, now it does not hold up a title transfer. So it just holds up those renewals. But it, it's become a bigger job than I'd ever. Five dollars, it is, is. This takes more than five dollars worth of work. And then you're not even counting the checks that we have to write. Every so often to pay them as well.
Have you notified the cities of Eagle Grove or Goldfield?
Not yet, I have a letter that the county attorney has prepared for me, um, I do need. The chairman's signature on that letter, because it's actually the board that enters into the twenty eighty agreement. And so it'll have to be your action that gives us.
Is that something we should wait on the cancellation of the twenty eighty until noticing, letting them know what we're going to do?
I think I have to have your action in order to. Yeah, and then once we terminate, it's the ninety days. Finish up their business.
They did ninety, right?
Am I saying this right?
Yeah, the letter that we have prepared is just a notice that there would be terminations in the board, just to do that. In the ninety days to do that.
So you do your decision first. Well, I'd like to make a motion to, um. Take action on the notice of termination for twenty eighty agreements with the city of Eagle Grove and the city of Goldfield and have the chairman sign. On cancellation or termination of the twenty eighty agreement.
Concerning parking.
Yes.
All in favor?
Thank you.
All ayes. Thank you. Okay, take action on removing Deb Nessine from the online control of county credit cards and designating. Amanda Meyer, the Wright County Auditor.
Yeah, last week Deb was appointed or designated for this and we're just gonna switch it to have me be.
Wish to approve the removal of Deb Nessine from the online control of county credit cards. And designating Amanda Meyer, Wright County Auditor as the online control. That's. I forget the two terms, one's an administrator and one's a.
Basic user.
Yeah, so I'd be the base.
We, we can add just another one.
That was my, gonna be my question.
Should we have your deputy, should she be that also?
Doesn't really do any of the, I mean, the claims, but I don't care.
And we can have, we can have all three too.
It's just that, you know, Deb is, is there, I mean, if, if something arises. She's, you know, if, if Joan is gone. You know, having somebody that's, that's there that can answer questions right away.
Are you opposed to having three?
It's whatever you guys want to do.
I would amend my motion to add. To add, uh, Amanda Meyer, Wright County Auditor. As a basic online control of the county credit cards, blah, 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 you know how to word it. So, so it would be, there would be three basic controls in that office.
Right. I will second that.
All in favor? Aye. All ayes. Okay, take action on removing Ryan. Rue Piper as medical examiner investigator per John Aronson.
So there was an email from John Aronson that was requesting that he be removed. As a county medical. County Medical Examiner. I would make a motion to remove Ryan Ru- Ru- Rue Piper as a medical examiner. Uh, per John Aronson's request.
I will second that motion.
All in favor? All ayes. Review and take action on two fireworks permit. Applications submitted by four G fireworks. Fire technicians. Uh, one is for one twenty-eighth Fairview Drive Belmont. Uh, location of display is Lake Cornea. And. I guess they both are for that.
Both on the same day or two different days?
Uh, one is the seven five at twenty-five and the other one's eight fifteen at twenty-five. And they paid their. Fees.
Is the seven five one, is that the normal fireworks display?
The first Saturday of July is when they set off their fireworks.
Eight fifteen, the Labor Day.
Which is the five.
Yeah.
Our Labor Day would be nine.
Fifteenth is a Friday in August. Who submitted that one? I mean, I know four G fire technicians did, because they're.
Ted Buesmann is, Todd Buesmann is on both of them.
But I think he's the, he's the four G fire technicians.
Doesn't get an address for that either of them?
I think.
One twenty-eighth Fairway Drive Belmont. Oh wait, that's.
One's at Lake Cornea and the other one is eleven seventy-nine Taylor Avenue Belmont.
Oh, I think that's the art center.
Yeah, okay, all right, yeah, that makes sense, that would be fireworks show.
I'll make a motion to, uh, approve the two fireworks permit applications. Uh, submitted by four G's fire technicians.
I'll second that.
All in favor? All ayes. Old business. New business.
Amanda has, how many do we have, thirty-four?
Um, thirty-two.
Thirty-two county employees are trained in her service.
Can I take it the board is paying for that? Do you want that?
I don't have, I don't have a line, unfortunately.
No, safety is under the supervisory.
And that's good news.
Update on meetings.
Food pantry is moving tomorrow and I was asked to attend. As well as CICS advisory meeting tomorrow.
I have a Boone River Water Street Management. Rather than being held at the library, because that was, uh, that location was taken, but, uh, I've reserved this room for that. Um, and that's on Thursday from two to four P M.
Is that moving forward, some of the, the river? And.
If I'm moving forward.
Something that maybe be on the agenda is that I was the fiscal agent.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, for that, and that might need to get updated now.
That wasn't, that was you specifically or was it the Wright County Auditor?
You know, I don't know what the word, bervage.
All of the fiscal agents are just begging.
Would you be willing to serve as the fiscal agent, continue to serve as a fiscal agent for the Boone River Water Street Management Authority? I think, uh, the upcoming thing that it will entail is. If we get our batch and build finally done, um, it would entail you. Receiving bills from one contractor and, uh, paying those with state funds that would come in from. By being association, the corn growers, uh. It's basically a bookwork.
It was, it was mostly Sean, Sean McCoy.
Sean McCoy.
Is the, kind of the lead on that, and he pretty much goes through, approves everything and you, you just kind of have to sign. And it, it all comes from that, there's no decision making really.
That's correct.
And just, we keep the bookwork, the auditor's office just keeps the bookwork on it.
Very good, thank you. So. If you'll look at that paperwork and if we need to. Change that in some way, I would get a copy of that and I will have that placed on the agenda so that we can update that. Uh, at this meeting, Amanda. Kyle Lament is no longer the, uh, D N R representative for that. And I can't remember the, the person's name who's. Uh, but she will be introduced at this meeting on Thursday, so.
And there's a, a, should be a file that has Boone River Water Station on it, that has all the contracts and stuff.
Uh, we were in the Republican float this weekend for the festival in the park. And my hat goes off to the people that rebuilt it, made it much easier to set up and go with it. And they did a really nice job on it, I think it looks great, other than the only complaint I got is Betty. I can't say that word.
Mark was running also, I, I noticed.
Well, maybe they should cut their conversations a little shorter. Other than that, it went well. Anything else before the board?
Mr. Chair, just one thing, uh, part of Iowa Regional Housing Trust Fund still has available funds for Wright County residents. I mean, that are qualified for home improvement.
Do we get any banks to help with that, do you remember?
Uh, yes, we did. Along with Prestige.
Super. Thanks for letting me know. Anything else?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Lynn.
I'll sign.
Thank you. All in favor? All ayes.